Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Stokes County Board of Commissioners for November thirteenth, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And the first item on our agenda is the invocation, and Commissioner Wood will deliver that for us.
Precious heavenly Father, thank you for the freedom we had to gather together and do the county's business. Be with us, Lord, as we discussed. Let us keep cool heads, let us make use of common sense. Watch over, guide us, and bless all our veterans. And, Lord, may we not need a special day to sing praise to our veterans across this nation. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Next item is our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Agenda approves unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments. And we have, looks like, four people signed up to speak tonight. I remind you to be limited to four minutes and ask you to stand close to the microphone so we can be sure and pick up what you have to say. And it looks like our first speaker is Lorna McLeod.
Good evening, sirs and madam commissioners. My name is Dr. Lorna McLeod, and I am the former Stokes County Animal Shelter veterinarian. I'm here tonight not only to witness the public statement from the county concerning false statements made about me from Ms. Natalie Johnston, but also to address and clarify other issues. First, maybe Ms. Brown can probably let you know how much I was charging the county for my services as shelter veterinarian. You remember? I will tell you, I was charging nothing. I charged you nothing for my services. And that is not true of the veterinarians before or potentially after me. I charged you nothing for my services. Secondly, are you aware of the national shortage of veterinarians in this country right now? It's severe. And the first ones that are hurt by that are animal rescues, humane societies, and shelters. So after publicly defaming a veterinarian, congratulations on alienating a group of professionals that you need and forging a reputation of bullying. That's right, bullying. Because if you want to tell Ms. Johnston, this isn't high school anymore, there's always going to be someone that's going to stand up and not take it. So let's talk about what Ms. Johnston said was really my ridiculousness when I came up to the shelter on August fourteenth. I don't think I found ridiculousness. I sent an email to each one of you commissioners and Ms. Brown with my ridiculous findings. So I guess my question is, why did the Department of Agriculture find the same ridiculous thing that I found and gave this shelter of this county a $500 civil penalty? So who is really doing the ridiculousness here? So this was a public inspection, and I'll read part of it. "A review of veterinary care records that prescription medications such as antibiotics and sedatives were being prescribed and administered by a shelter employee who was not under the direct supervision of a North Carolina licensed veterinarian, which requires the shelter to provide adequate veterinary care in a timely manner." Another point, a shelter or a review of the shelter's program of veterinary care, so they had one, showed that it stated that the shelter will take an ill or injured animal to the county veterinarian. Contrary to the shelter's program of veterinary care, ill animals were being provided with inadequate...
Your time's up.
My name's Kathleen Edwards. I signed up right under Dr. McLeod, and I would like to yield my minutes.
Okay, you can do that.
Thank you.
"Ill animals were being provided with inadequate veterinary care by shelter staff in lieu of being taken to the county veterinarian or following a written treatment protocol prescribed by a licensed veterinarian." So those were two things that they found, and because of that, further down, a $500 violation for failure to provide adequate veterinary care in a timely manner to the shelter animals by inappropriately prescribing and administering prescription medication without any examination, prescription, or written treatment protocol from a North Carolina licensed veterinarian. This is all public record. You can go to the Department at Ag and read that whole thing. So now the best part is, after this came down the pipes, what is the most logical thing to do? Give the staff a promotion! Give her a raise! That is the most backwards thing I've ever heard. And truly, the former director, I started on July first. Director Shore, whom Ms. Johnston said was my friend, she was placed on leave on the fifth and eventually terminated at the end of the month. I didn't find out about any of this until August eleventh. Ms. Brown, why did I have to find out about this through other means other than you? Shouldn't you have called me? Ms. Shore was my only contact who was giving me permission to do anything. But went all that time without knowing she didn't call me, that wasn't her job. I was texting her work phone and never received replies because it was in your hair. Why didn't you call me? So in closing, this is what happens when you place inexperienced, unprofessional people in positions they have no business being in. And in my opinion, it looks very bad. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Wall. Okay, Jennifer, that's good. How about Sonia DeBurley?
I changed my mind.
You don't want to speak? Okay. All right, that concludes our public comments. The next item on our agenda is comments from the managers and commissioners, and I will start with Commissioner Menon Hall.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I hope everyone had a very good weekend. It's a very special weekend, in my opinion. Veterans Day is such an important thing. I know the City of King had a Veterans Day celebration, and I just want to say I have strong feelings for the people in our country that is willing to join the military and fight for our freedoms. And the reason I say I was actually going to bring a big plaque shadow box that I got Frank Duncan to do for my mother after my dad died. My dad's passing will be ten years, the end of this month, the day before Thanksgiving, he'll be gone ten years. My dad fought in the Korean War, and he was awarded a Bronze Star for heroism in the Battle of Duty. And then I had two sons, Kyle and Josh. Kyle did three years and did two stints in Afghanistan. He was in Special Ops. And then Josh was, he had a real good job. He was a military policeman for three years in the Army. If you know what a military policeman goes through on a weekend, that's a pretty tough job. But my family has a long history of having people that wants to serve, and it made me very proud. And I guess I wanted to bring, when Frank did that shadow box and I gave it to my mother after the funeral, my dad had cancer, and when we brought him home from the hospital, they said he probably had a couple of days to live. He lived 36 days. And in those 36 days, he gathered together his Bronze Star that he'd been awarded and all the things from the military that they'd given him for that. And I guess my dad's my hero. And we have so many heroes in America today that's willing to do for our country, to give you the freedom to get up and speak and express yourself. And I promised myself I wouldn't get too emotional tonight when I talked about that, but for all the people in Stokes County, all the people in North Carolina, all the people in the United States of America that has gone and defended our country, I give kudos to every one of those people. And I give them the honor that they deserved, and I hope that y'all will do the same. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Menon.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to see everyone here and those of you that are watching us on YouTube or streaming tonight. I think it's very important that you do pay attention to what goes on, especially in local politics. And I appreciate the public comments. That's what America's all about. Also, I'd like to welcome several members of the King City Council, including the mayor. Appreciate you all making the trek across the mountain here to the big town of Danbury. One thing I want to bring up is, I attended the Stokes County Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting on the eighth of this month. They're in Autumn Square. And I just want to remark that it was really, really, really nice since that whole area's been remade. It's an actual, what an actual operations center looks like when you have a bad incident, especially with Incident Command. And it was really nice, all the work that's been upgraded in there. That's going to be such a great benefit to the citizens of Stokes County if we, the next disaster we have, or if any kind of, if it was a large criminal matter where they had to form an Incident Command. And the best thing about it is the county worked really, really hard and got a lot of money grant-wise, so it didn't cost the local taxpayers really any money. But we got steady-dart equipment, and it's just a first-class operation now, so I want to thank the manager and branded gentry of spearheading that operation. Thank you, that's all I got.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Chandler, Commissioner Wood.
I'd like to welcome everybody. You're going to get off light tonight. I had a page and a half of comments wrote out, and I left it laying on my desk. So first thing I want to mention is the Caregivers Awareness Month. We've got a lot of people in Stokes County, surrounding counties, who are looking after the elderly, and some of them are not elderly, they're just down on their luck, dementia. Paula has a group meeting in King first Tuesday night. I've been going for, gosh, over a year, and I'm not a caregiver now, and she won't let me stop attending, but it's really good. The sad thing is, the people who really need to be there can't get away. They can't leave a husband or a wife long enough to attend these meetings. So if you've got a neighbor or somebody, give them a break. If it's any way you can, and look after them long enough where they can go to the grocery store or drugstore. The other thing, this Thursday at 12 o'clock, the two, Sandy Bridge, Regency Group, it's the old bank, this is the 460-plus Food Bank giveaway drive-through. They give away lots of foods, and I plan on being there helping them. And the last thing I got, and I'm kind of thrilled about this because I never thought I'd get anything done I asked for. Of course, Amber wrote the letter, and we have, I think, on Mountain Road, we got a guardrail where there needs to be a guardrail. So I'm proud of that, and I thank her. And that's all I got.
Commissioner Cox.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here and those that are watching online. A couple things. I'd like to congratulate all our newly-elected officials and our new Mayor of King and Terry Fowler, and we've got Chad Jarvis here from Wana Cove Council. I'm not going to name them all because I'd probably leave somebody out, but those are three that's here that I can physically see. And thank the King Council for being here tonight, our DSS Board members that are here, our JCPC Board members that are here. Appreciate all of them being here. Again, I would like to reiterate what has already been said about Veterans Day and how important it is, and as Keith mentioned in his prayer, every day should be Veterans Day. So you just can't thank somebody enough willing to give their life to keep us free and to help make sure we maintain a free republic that we live in. So that's very important. Also, I wanted to remind everybody that the Stokes County EMS is doing a stuff-the-ambulance drive. I shared it on my Facebook page today. It's on the EMS page. I think the county is going to share it on their page. There are three station drop-off locations. Station one, Wana Cove School Road. Station two is here in Danbury at the Fire Rescue Lane, and station three at Chestnut Grove Road. Also, it looks like you can drop them off at the EMS Administration Office that you just mentioned, that's number eight at Autumn Square. A new unwrapped toy between nine and six through the 13th of December. So just remember, hopefully, we stuffed a lot of ambulances last year, so hopefully we can do that again. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amber, your comments.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you all for being here. Like Dr. McLeod said, I wanted to make a few statements during this time, and the county wishes to correct statements that were made at the September 25th, 2023 Commissioners Meeting by Ms. Natalie Johnston. Ms. Johnston stated that Dr. Lorna McLeod literally kicked in the door at our animal shelter and caused ridiculousness. Ms. Johnston also stated that Dr. McLeod had involved the DEA in the affairs of the shelter, and the county does not believe Dr. McLeod behaved aggressively or ridiculously, and Dr. McLeod did not involve the DEA in the affairs of the shelter. The county regrets any perception to the contrary that could be inferred from Ms. Johnston's statements at the September 25th, 2023 meeting. And I did want to apologize as well that you were not contacted after the previous director left. I was under the impression that she had contacted you, and since she worked directly with the shelter, that the interim director had contacted you, so I apologize for that.
All right, thank you, Amber. I'd like to welcome all the elected officials. Since you're coming to my meeting, I guess I need to come to yours. I'll be showing up there to check out all the new folks that have been elected and check on what the business is you guys are doing in our municipalities, because we're always very interested in that. And with that, we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is Conflicts of Interest Statement. Before moving further, does any board member have a conflict with any of the items on the agenda for tonight, or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest? Okay, great. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I'd accept a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Second. Any discussion or questions on Consent Agenda? All in favor say aye. Oppose? No? It passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Information Agenda, and we've got one item on there tonight presented by our Finance Director, Lisa Langford, and it's Finance/Fiscal Year 2022/2023 in totals of amounts and so forth. So I'll turn it over to you, Lisa, to do that.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And hopefully, there is information in here that will be beneficial to you. The board had requested an update for fiscal year '22, '23 year-end figures. I have some of the revenues, however, I do not have the expenditures because they will probably change with year-end journal entries. So I did not want to, I'm very cautious about making a fund balance percentage without all of the information certified by the auditors. So the content of this, responsibilities of the Finance Department, our property tax revenue, sales tax, the grants that we are following right now, the software conversion for both Finance and HR, and where we stand with our audit. And I won't read through all of these bullet points of what Finance Department does, but there are, it's always moving targets. Everything, everyday, day-to-day operations, assisting the 27 county departments, providing assistance for the Water and Sew Authority, and helping the county manager with the budget. Then I did put in the property tax revenue, of which we, the increase was $807,000 for the total from fiscal year '21-'22, so there was an increase. And that was for the general fund, and also the general fund for sales tax. There was an increase of $745,515 over fiscal year '21-'22. But Tracy and I attended a webinar last Thursday from the League of Government, mainly focused on budgeting for fiscal year '24-'25 on sales tax, and was strongly encouraged to be very conservative coming up. The trend is, it's probably going to not continue to increase, probably go down.
That's our next budget we're getting ready to do, right?
'24-'25, yes, sir. And also included, I won't go over all of the sales tax revenues for each fire district and the schools. And then on the sheet of the grants, the first block is for the Water and Sew Authority. Even though they're a separate component, we still are responsible for their audit. So we're, mostly it's Sherry and Stuart that overlooks, but then we still have to gather information for the audit. And the second block of grants are the ones that are more of the county that we manage. And note that some of these are reimbursable grants. Don't get all the money upfront. And the $450,000 for the Stokes Fire Rescue Grant, that is one that we have not received any monies for yet. As far as the software conversion, Paylocity, the implementation is currently in the process, and we're working hand-in-hand with HR payroll to make sure that this conversion is a success. CitySuite, which is for the Finance, they're coming onsite for the first schedule of work, December 12th and the 13th, to start that kickoff. And then my final sheet is on the audit. We are 90.16% completed. There are a few, a small amount of returned items that usually just need clarification. Just have a question. Some of the outstanding items cannot be completed, like the management discussion and analysis, until the draft is printed. Hopefully, be completed in December. And very cautious, I'm giving the fund balance, because there are still journal entries that need to be made. And at the end of November, Tracy and I have signed up for a class from the UNC School of Government on internal control for local governments. Hopefully, getting some more knowledge on fraud prevention, statutory internal controls, and a deep dive into control activities. So in the time we have, we're going to start learning some new techniques. And then I also gave out information that we found out pretty much what happened in fiscal year '22-'23 from the League of Municipalities and their quarterly review for the fourth quarter, for your leisure to read. And that's it? Any questions, or can come by and see me?
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Cox. Do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Still looking through some of this information she provided.
Okay. Mr. Wood.
Good job. Kind of overwhelmed that you meant to do it that way, right?
Yes, sir, I did.
Like you are all the time.
That's all I got.
Mr. Chandler.
So with projections, so between the, so like for last budget year, the fiscal year we just come out of, or the county's projections, like they just say sales tax. So I know that, you know, most governments, you know, you're going to be conservative, you know, with the estimate of what we would think on the revenue. But in actuality, since, I mean, how off or how conservative were we? You don't have to give an exact amount, but I mean, were we?
Pretty conservative. Every year, we are.
Quite a bit conservative? What I'm trying to say is...
Is there any room in that corner?
I mean, it's good to be conservative, but I want to make sure that we're not, you know, we're not like cutting off our little pinky or something. I just want to, I mean, I think that, I think that we should set maybe, our goal maybe should be a certain percentage, Amber, of, you know, the conservative to where is, I mean, and I get it, the take is, is, you know, it's easier when you're under the estimate, and then if you don't have enough revenue coming in. But what, hopefully, especially with our new software and stuff like that, hopefully that we'll get more fine-tuned, that, you know, we can get a little bit closer to the mark. Other than that, I think you're all doing a really great job, and I appreciate you signing up for the webinar for the UNC School of Government. That'll prove dividends down the road, too, but thank you for what you do.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Menon. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Menon.
I don't have a lot. It's like Commissioner Cox, I wanted to look through a few things. I will give Lisa credit on making sure that I didn't ask what the fund balance was. She came up here three times before the meeting started and said, Mr. Menon, don't ask me what the fund balance is. So I will make sure, Ms. Langford, I'm not gonna ask you what the fund balance is. I know, I know the expenditures and revenues can come and go. I do wanna know just one thing. You know, we've converted to the new payroll software with HR. And I'm looking at your statement on that, the Paylocity, HR payroll software that we are converting to. And it says that you're working hand-in-hand with HR. I guess my question is, is when do you feel like you will be comfortable in the conversion being completed?
Their goal is to have the first payroll in January.
First of the year.
First of the year, yes, sir.
Feel very comfortable?
So far, I think we've hit the marks, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Lisa, when, when the city suite, do you know, you or Amber know when the city suite is supposed to be completed? You said they're starting in December. It takes a while, doesn't it?
Do you remember? I mean, we're probably looking about eight months.
Eight months, okay. That'd be interesting. I can't wait to see how all of that operates once we get there. Then the only other question I had is, it looks like you guys are really ahead on the audit stuff this year. And I wondered if, do you know if we're gonna run into problems with the auditors being overwhelmed like they have been recently with?
I can talk to Kelly tomorrow.
Okay.
If you want.
Just curious. I know there's a lot of, a lot of audit firms have, are deciding not to do government audits. And so I'm glad you guys are on schedule and I hope, hopefully they'll be able to meet our, is it October 31st it's supposed to be done?
That's the soft. Usually they never meet. It's usually the end of December when most of them are done.
Yeah, that'd be great if we can get it done by then. Alrighty, anybody, anybody have any second?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Information. We have bedtime reading tonight.
You can always bring questions back. She's always here with us. After you digest it further. Okay, the next item, we'll go to our discussion agenda. And the first item on the discussion is a request for additional DSS staff and space, that's fiscal space, Medicaid expansion. And I think Stacy is gonna present on that with the support of her DSS board members who are in the room.
Yes, we have our chair, Jan Spencer, and our vice chair, Darlene Bullins, here with me. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you and present a need that we have at the Department of Social Services. Medicaid is coming fast. Expansion is coming fast. And while we are readying ourselves for that, the need for additional help has become very obvious. Agency's current Medicaid workforce is doing all they can to learn expansion guidelines and continue the work that must be done for benefit to continue. I understand the timing of my ask is not ideal, but I see no way around it with the work that must continue along with the increase in the work that is coming. The memo that I provided spells out the details. I'm asking for two income maintenance caseworkers and one income maintenance supervisor with the reimbursement at this time. That's what I'm asking for. I can see that increase soon. With the reimbursement from federal and state dollars, there would be no cost to the county since the state is covering the county share of these new positions. The actual cost of the memo may even be less depending on when we're able to hire staff. That is a challenge right now across the board. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, we'll start with Commissioner Wood. You wanna go first?
Was she confident in finding these people?
My confidence was low back at the beginning of the fiscal year when you guys granted us two positions and we were able to hire them pretty quickly. So I'm very hopeful. My confidence level is probably not very high, but very hopeful.
Yep. The only other, I'm gonna say my other question. Okay. Commissioner Cox?
Um, how long does it take to get these people hired? I mean, once they're hired, trained? Because I know there's very specific training that they have to go through.
There is. And I'll, I'll tell you, I asked today how many Medicaid programs we have, how, how much, how many different programs there are involved in Medicaid. And the number is just astronomical. There's at least 20, probably more. And that's programs that have different eligibility, different income requirements. So each of those programs has to be evaluated for folks. So the training period, the two that we hired in July, they both started around July 24th, I think. They are still training. While they're doing a little bit of work, they're still training. And they will probably continue that through the end of the year. But they are able to do some of the work and help with some of the work.
I was just gonna say that I knew the training was pretty substantial that they have to go through to be able to do the job. And we don't have any openings right now in income maintenance.
Not in income maintenance.
Yep. So that's a good thing because we have had other openings that we couldn't fill there. So being that I serve on the DSS board, I'm pretty clear on the need and the need for space as she, as she might elaborate on here. So, because I started to say, I'm not sure where we would put these three new people, but I'm definitely in favor of being able to hire some more help.
Okay. Mr. Chandler?
No questions. I, I read in my agenda packet, you know, your memo and everything. I totally agree. I support you on the need. That's, that's overwhelming. I mean, you can only, you can only expect, you know, people to, to work at a certain volume five days a week without stressing them out. And that's when mistakes happen. So I support you.
Commissioner Menon?
You have my total support. I read over your memo. I looked, I've been looking at some of the other counties as far as the way they are attacking the Medicaid expansion coming up. Asking for two caseworkers and one supervisor. I don't see a problem at all with that. So you've got my support on it. You're welcome.
Okay, thanks. Stacy, I support you as well. The, we knew the Medicaid expansion was gonna have this impact, so this is not a surprise. So this will, this will make five people that we're adding because of Medicaid expansion can be attributed to Medicaid expansion, correct?
That's correct.
Do you see a need for more than that?
I do.
How many more?
Probably two caseworkers.
Eventually up to seven, to seven then?
Yes. And, and you know, that, that's just, once Medicaid expansion comes, it becomes its own, it just takes over some of the other programs that are there. So like, for instance, the family planning program, almost every person on that family planning program will automatically be spilled over to expansion. So everybody on family planning who right now are just getting a, a visit for birth control, for example, and that's all they're eligible for under the family planning program, come December 1st, all of those people are gonna be eligible for full Medicaid unless they, unless there's some criteria that they don't meet. So that's huge. There is a huge amount of people who are gonna be getting assistance with their healthcare benefits come December 1st, and that's awesome. So it's, it's a wonderful program, but it's huge and...
You already answered it.
Okay.
Get back on another one.
I do it all the time.
The chart you put in, it shows the uptick of caseload for Medicaid, like from, from up to October. I guess it's up to this past October. Where you, where you went from, like in January, 87, 58, you're up to 93, 95. You expect that same trend to add each month?
Yes, sir.
So when will it level out? Have any idea?
I don't have any idea. And, and you know, the numbers that I put in the memo, I think I said that like right now, with the caseload and the workers that we have right now, each worker has about 650 cases, give or take, which is really too many. So adding two more workers to the mix, it's gonna decrease it some, but it's probably not gonna decrease it enough for the workload that's coming.
Okay.
That's why I see myself asking for additional.
Okay, the next question I have is the, the states paying our county share now? Or is that something that's gonna continue for a long time? Or is that, is that something like, like a grant where it cuts off and then we have to take it over?
They haven't said it's gonna cut off. And they're only, they're gonna continue providing money probably at the beginning of the fiscal year for, to help pay the county share. And the, the monies that we've gotten since the first allotment and then this new allotment that we'll get in December, that will cover the county share for the two that we hired in July, and it will cover the county share for these three, and it would cover the county share for two additional. So I'm hopeful that it would be enough to at least cover the county share for five workers moving forward. They said that we will get that money until Medicaid expansion is no longer in. There's no indication that Medicaid expansion is not going to exist.
Yeah, it'll last forever now that it's here, surely. Okay, on the space issue, you, you, you had two options that were in the memo you put out. One was, one was the conference room. What was the other one?
Well, I, I met with Amber and Stuart Easter last week about space. You know, we've talked about turning our conference room into pods. We've talked about turning our file room upstairs into pods. And that's all fine and well, but we already have storage issues along with worker issues. We have no space whatsoever, no. So it would not behoove us to make off places in our building office pods. So in speaking with Amber and Stuart, we, we went and toured the probation building up here on the hill, and we went and looked at EMS station down the hill. And both of those are pretty viable, so it's just a matter of making it happen.
EMS station in Danbury?
Where, where DRC is.
They moved out of?
Yeah, where DRC is in the bottom.
Or Autumn Square?
They're moving.
That's where they went to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
DRC's in the bottom.
So you're gonna look, look at one of those two probably instead of taking your own space up? Okay.
I have a question about that space.
Sure, go ahead.
I know we were talking about having Board of Elections hopefully in their building sooner than later, but for sure by the primary, which is March. And so if that's the case, could probation move into the space that's occupied by the Board of Elections right now while they're waiting on the courthouse renovation? And that would open up that building for?
Yeah, we've, we've explored that option, but they won't be able to move for a couple, a couple of months at least. And I think if we go the, the route of the, where DRC is and Stacy and DSS take the top level, that's, that's, we can do that like next week, you know, with some improvements, some paying flooring, but that wouldn't cost that much. We, we have that already budgeted. So yes, that is an option, but the quickest option is the, yeah, is moving to above DRC where EMS just moved out of. Because we did think about that too. And Stuart said that could work if we needed to in the future, if, if we need even more space.
Just want to ensure the Board of Elections space was big enough to house the probation.
They said they can make it work until, if they needed to, is what they had told us. So we did check, Stuart checked into that.
Okay. That answers my questions. Do you guys have any second, other questions?
Yeah.
What do we need to do? Move this to action for the next meeting? Or what, what's your recommendation?
I think we need to head move it to action till, I think we need to move it to action till then.
Yeah.
Okay.
The RMC.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stacy. Appreciate it.
Are we gonna move both the three positions and the space or just the three positions?
Just the three positions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that you necessarily need to vote on the space. Yeah, just the three positions.
Just go ahead and tell Brandon that he can help.
He's already, he's pretty much out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he, he got that one there.
You have to tell him twice.
All right, the next item on our agenda, on our discussion agenda is reallocation of JCPC funds. And who's gonna talk to that? You, Amber?
Um, Rich is here.
Oh, is he here? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I see it. It's on my notes here. Pardon that.
Good evening.
How you doing, Rich?
Fine. Thank y'all for inviting us up. Wanted, we also have staff from the Children's Center of Surrey here to talk about the program. Our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one of our programs, decided they needed to cease operation. That was our Stokes Temporary Shelter. That put 14,409 back on the table. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council met in October on the 17th to reallocate those funds because we wanna make sure they're meeting the needs of Stokes County youth. The council is recommending that we fund a new program, and that is Stokes Y Tri. That will be approximately 11,084 in JCPC funds and 3,325 in Stokes County funds that are already allocated. So this is not an additional request. This is just a reallocation. The brief, I think the briefing in your packet addresses some of the basic information. And Zach is here and able to speak to answer any questions about the program, if that's okay with y'all.
Sure, that's fine.
Just give you guys a quick refresher. I know we talked about the Y Tri program briefly in the, the last time I was here. But Y Tri is an evidence-based interpersonal skill-building program for youth that are either court-involved already or at risk for delinquency. It teaches them things like coping mechanisms, resiliency, gives them incentive to try in school, and positive peer relationships and things like that. It's a 10-week course. We'd serve about 12 children over that course of 10 weeks. Happy to answer any questions you have. Oh, we'll also say that we, we've operated, the Children's Center's operated this program for years in Yadkin County. We have it in Surrey County and Wilkes County as well. So excited to bring this opportunity to youth in Stokes.
Okay, great. Okay, questions? Commissioner Chandler, you wanna start?
Just, I read the packet and I guess just a comment is that I'm, I'm interested in giving it a go.
Okay.
I think, I think it shows promise. And like I've said before, I like, I like the way, you know, we track to make sure programs that, that we don't feel is making the impact the targeted community, you know, we try something, something different. So I, I'm willing to give that flexibility. So I have, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Menon.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I read over your memo that you put out here. And I see several, several items that I really think will be helpful and things, roadblocks that will not be there, such as so many times, transportation is a roadblock. And we see that in so many things we wanna do, but I see in here, transportation will be provided to and from the group each week. That's one of my biggies there. I, I like the idea of the way you're gonna handle your after-school, 3:30 to 6:00 each week. That was a good, good component, in my opinion. Just my... I'm just all for giving it a go, so you have my support on it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wood?
I'm all for it.
Okay, Commissioner Cox?
Yeah, I think it's a good program, and I think there'll be a lot of youth that'll be positively impacted by it. Where does it take place or is there more than one location?
It will be in one, we gotta figure out, it's really gonna be dependent on where the referrals, majority of those come from, whether it's the King side or over here in Danbury. But typically, we hold those at schools. That eases some of the transportation issue by having them at the school already.
Right.
When you can.
Well, I wish you a lot of success with it.
Thank you.
But Eric, one area one gets slack because of transportation.
Right, right, right.
Okay, I fully support your redistribution there. So I think we're all good to go. Does it need to be on the action tonight or next time?
I think as long as you just give a consensus, that's fine.
Okay, have a consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. Be good together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Just to forewarn you, Lisa has asked that we do our planning early this year. And so we'll be getting that, that plan to y'all in, into her in February. So we'll try to not be a late item on next year's agenda.
Much appreciated. Okay, next item on our agenda is the offer for surplus tax foreclosed property. And Glenda Pruitt is gonna talk about that.
I was looking, that's why I got my computer.
Um, this is hopefully the last piece of surplus property that we're gonna have for a while, unless Richard takes something, but I hope he doesn't. But this is the last one that we have that's on the books right now. And we, this one was kind of, we may have several offers on, so it's kind of been drawn out since mid-September. But we finally ended the upset bid period, and Mr. Spencer was the final offer that was made for eight thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. So with that being said, I am recommended to the board that we accept his offer so we can get it back on the tax records. This gentleman does, he actually owns the piece of property that goes around it, so I was kind of glad he ended with it. So I'm just asking for your all's consensus to go and move. We can move it to action at the next meeting because it gives me time to get the paperwork to tie for the deed work and everything. If you all are in agreeance.
Anybody have any questions? We're good with it. I think we'll move it to action for next.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is finance, I think financing equipment repaving for Autumn Square. That's also Glenda.
Yes, so Lisa, Tracy, myself, we had sent out a request for quotes for numerous banks. Sometimes when you send out for quotes from banks, you get lots and sometimes you get a few. This year we got three. One of them, even though we were gracious that they sent a quote, it could not meet our needs due to, they kind of had an issue with the repaving portion. They, there was more paperwork on their end, and so they just sent in a submittal for the equipment, which really wouldn't meet our needs. So the other two banks, First National and First American, both sent in a quote. So after reviewing of them, Lisa, Tracy and myself, we would like to go with the First National Bank with the three-year, thirty-six-month timeframe. And that would put us at a five-point-one-three percent interest rate, which was lower than the other bank. So that's the one that we would like to recommend for the board to go with.
Okay, do you need action on it tonight?
If you can do action for it tonight, that would be great because that way the banks kind of would like to get it, all the paperwork done and everything by the end of December because they're fiscal year. So I told them we would try our best to do all that.
Okay, what questions does the board have, comments?
No questions. I just think, hey, makes sense. First National Bank got five-point-one-three percent versus the other bank had six-point-one-three. We're gonna save money, and I like the idea of getting it over with at three payments versus four, so I'm all for it.
I'm good. Call them tonight before they go up on address.
I told them all, because that was their first question, when would I know an answer? And I told them that I would know tomorrow, so I'll send out an email in the morning if you all are good with it.
Okay, we'll move it to action tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Glenda.
You're welcome.
Uh, the next item is the opioid settlement coordinator job description. I don't know who's gonna take the lead on that.
Um, I can just give a brief description.
See Tammy and Chad are here too, in case we need input from them.
So after the last, after the last meeting, you know, HR's been working on these job descriptions, specifically the coordinator or facilitator, whatever we end up calling it, that position, because that's really the first one that we wanted to focus on hiring before we get to like the peer support specialists and the other ones. Because I guess the intention is hopefully the coordinator or facilitator can, can help in creating that next job description in the hiring of that other person. So looking at three other counties, they put, HR put together a job description that they think that would be, I guess, desirable based off of those other three county examples for ones who have done coordinators or facilitators already with the opioid settlement funds. And they also put, of course, some of our county requirements in there as well. So I guess we just need to discuss that, make changes if there are recommended changes, and hopefully approve that either this meeting or the next. And that way we can post that and hopefully get that started. And then we also need to decide if advisable where to place that position at because that also affects where the salary, because if it's a state employee, then it has to fall under the state salary plan. HR needs to work on that as well, make sure it falls within those allotments. So we also need to make that decision.
All righty. Start with Commissioner Menon Hall. You have questions, comments on the job description?
Yeah, I looked at the duties and responsibilities. I think you're very well-suited for this position. And at the end, I thought what your requirements was for the position, masters or BA in public health, social work, public administration or related field, and, and five years' experience in one of those areas, so. Good, good to go with that.
Okay, Commissioner Chandler?
I've read the job description, and I think it does a good job of taking a little bit of what was on the other three or four job descriptions initially looked at. That's very comprehensive. And I, I support that job description.
Will you go third? There's nothing left to say. I agree with the other two. I don't know what you want to say.
Of course. I got a few comments. So we talked about this in our substance use treatment meeting today, and there were varying opinions about it coming out of that meeting. So we were talking about should there be any type of licensure requirements? And I personally think that the masters or bachelors and the experience piece is the most important thing because I feel like they're gonna probably hire some people with license, you know, that will come in, that will have licensure requirements, that will probably work through the Health Department when they decide if they want the LCAS or what exactly they want that to be. We talked about if the title, opioid prevention coordinator, really is what we wanted to call this position and looking at maybe what some other, I think we looked, we talked a lot today about what Surrey does and how it's kind of worked for them and kind of we can model it a lot after Surrey. And they have what they call the Surrey County Office of Substance Abuse and Recovery. I like to keep the prevention word in there myself. So I don't know if we would consider saying a substance abuse recovery and prevention coordinator because I think opioid, although I feel like it is being paid for with that opioid money, so it's, you've got to have, like Amber said, a strong.
Some kind of language.
Language in there that supports that as, as an opioid prevention piece. But so that it's broader with the substance abuse recovery and prevention, I think we could talk about tweaking the title was one thing. And we talked about where this position might, should go. And the consensus seemed to be from that meeting that it was a standalone position that would work with all different groups so that it wasn't under one certain umbrella or one certain director, that it would be more like a standalone position. I think that was Amber's recommendation as well, that it be that.
Who does it report to?
Amber.
I mean, or it could be any setup the board would like for it to be. I mean, they could report to you, to me, or to whatever, I mean, department, that's kind of what we need to figure out is.
And we have to decide that because I would kind of like to hear the Health, see and read the Health Department's strategic plan that they're putting together before we make a decision on that, which is coming, I think. Chad, you said? Tammy? Within the next couple of weeks? Okay, so when do we need to make the decision?
We just want, we just want my full word, I mean, until we approve the job description and take those steps. As far as what department, because like I said, that, that may be contingent on. Making sure that falls in the state salary plan too.
Because the state, and one thing that was talked about today at our meeting, what the salary was talked about at length, and I think you've got, you know, what everybody else's make. And this, this position would start out at above a lot of your supervisors in a lot of your departments. And depending on if it's, to support that salary range that's listed, it doesn't need to be under a different, that's why I think, another reason it doesn't need to be under a certain department. It should be a standalone like Surrey does it.
I think it needs to be under the Health Department because it fits more with the complexities of the problem. And when you're talking about pay, I think you need to look at what the qualifications and what the complexities are and also to what the accountability is gonna be. Because on that job description, and the way I would see it, is that there's not a department head that's working here, maybe besides the Health Department and DSS, that has the accountability from the state standards and from the, and the statistics that we do on this side of the, of the House and government.
Well, we definitely need to make sure that, as you look at the qualifications, I mean, jeez, the salary range is the low end to the high end.
That's not the fringe, that's not with the fringe.
And I'm, I'm just going by what I'm seeing in front of me.
I know, I'm just.
Is thirty-six thousand dollars difference from the low range to the top. That's, that's a big gap. So to me, experience and the qualifications of, well, they got a BA, a BS, or a MA or MS should play a very important role in this.
Well, I will say that like most of our, all of our other jobs actually, the fifth, the first number that's listed is our minimum, and then the other number that's listed, the ninety-four, is the maximum. So, so we wouldn't be able to hire above that midpoint, so we wouldn't be bringing anybody near that, that other number. It's just to show what that, the full scale.
I'm just saying, that's the range.
Right.
It's showing fifty-eight thousand nine oh four all the way up to ninety-four thousand two forty-six. That's quite a bit. That gives you a long range, and I know what you're talking about.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and, and I think that, I think the board can make a decision. The board, us, the Board of Commissioners can go higher than that of a midpoint, right?
Yes, yeah, if we got an applicant.
Just because it's in a, in a policy for the, you know, for, for the departments, doesn't mean that.
Right.
Because, I mean, I don't know what, we can't, the, this position is, is, we need to make the right decision with this position. I'm getting very, I get disappointed, I'm just getting disappointed, I think, with a lot of the, a lot of our decisions that we're making. And we have to have the flexibility. This is a, a position that is complex, is very highly competitive, it's new. I mean, throughout the state, it's not, you know, it's not like you have a, you don't have a lot of people that have done this type of job in this, in this area. It's very new. And the other thing you need to remember is that we gotta, this is not traditional old stuff. We're gonna be trying stuff that is different, it is new. And you need, you need a leader who's confident to do that. And, and that's part of the reason why I just don't think it's a fit sitting under this, whoever the county manager will be, I don't, I don't think it needs to be pigeonholed in a, as a county department. It needs to be over in the Health Department.
Well, that seems like that pigeonholes it to be in one department when it would have more flexibility to work with juvenile, with, with the court-involved people. I'm just saying, if we want to model after what Surrey's done, it seems like they, they created their standalone department.
And, and I bet with the, with the coordinator and some of his staff, and he's a, I mean, he's a very, he did a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of good stuff.
Started out, just him, just the one person.
But I think also you have to watch the, the politics. And when you're working under, under the manager, and I think you're subject to sometimes different whims from the, maybe from the board or commissioners. As we all know, we're not all gonna be here. I mean, I know I ain't gonna be here too many more times. So, I mean, and, and it's got, we have to have, there's gotta be stability. You can't, if you're gonna, if you're gonna come in, if you're gonna, if you're gonna recruit somebody or somebody applies and attracts somebody that is not strongly committed and devoted to Stokes County and is willing to go above and beyond, this has got, this has got to be done the right way that takes away the politics out of it. The only thing political about it should be are they doing the job or not? And, and don't know how to show if they're doing the job or not with accountability.
My, my opinion is it should be under, I think, under the Health Department. I was in the Surrey meeting as well with Brad, talking to those guys, and we talked about this very subject a good bit. We didn't get a firm answer one way or the other out of those guys about where it should be. There's pros and cons to each, but I have a separate concern I have is, is the amount of work the county manager already has to do. And we have a county manager with no real assistant county manager, supervising twenty departments and all kind of issues like animal control, for example. And, and if we put it under the Health Department, we've got a Health Board that's overseeing what's going on. And to me, you know, we can always change it later, but that seems like a good way to start, especially with the aggressive and highly qualified Health Board we currently have, which I think may be as good as we've had since I've been associated with the county. So my vote would be to put, at least start out with it under the Health Board. And on the job description, the only nitpick I had on it was the, it says desirable education and experience. Just that it doesn't say there's any required education and experience. So did they leave it that way deliberately for, just for flexibility or?
I'm assuming so, because like I said, they took the three other counties, but I think the, more than just those three, I think the, the majority of them said masters. I think all of them said master's degree from the ones we've looked at, so that's why we included that. But I, I assume you're right, that's why they said desirable, just because it may be hard to find somebody of that caliber.
Most of them I've seen have required education experience and then desired as a separate paragraph after that. But that's okay if they do it this way, I think. So anybody want, do you want a second round, anybody? Comments, questions? When do you want to decide about all this? Do you want to hear, like me, do you want to hear the Health Board, look at the Health Board's strategic plan before we do it? Or do we need to wait?
I mean, if they. Well, I mean, if they, if they, if they know that it's gonna go under there, that might affect what they put in the, the strategic plan, you know? I mean, if we don't, if the support's not there for, for, for the health department, I mean, then okay, we just need to move on then. And they can move it under, start moving it under the manager.
I'd like to hear Amber elaborate on her, um, thoughts on why she was thinking it shouldn't be under the health, under a certain department.
Well, my only concern, I think, that's already been stated, and I don't have a, a dog in this fight as far as the decision making. But my only concerns was just on, from the board's perspective, this position having the flexibility to work, to work with all the departments and not just the health department. And, you know, I know this, this is, there's nothing wrong with this, but departments are inherently territorial. Um, so my only concern as far as from the board's side of it is when you put it under the health department. They thought they, they're a health department employee and they work under the health director and the board of health. Therefore, they don't report to, to y'all at all, which is the county's money. So it's, so it's hard. I just, I, my only concern is just the control of it and the reporting, cause if something goes wrong, y'all are gonna be responsible either way. And I'm sure you know that, but that, that, that's just my main concern is that the, the direction will more than likely come from, from the health department, not from this board.
So Amber, what, what other department right now, department head would you foresee that would be working actively with substance abuse recovery?
EMS, DSS, the district resource center, they work with.
Does it surprise you that, that, that EMS is already working with the health department on, on a daily basis?
No, no.
That, that wouldn't be issued in, I'm sure if, if the coordinator was in the, the health department.
Right, right now it wouldn't. But I feel, like I said, like Commissioner Morris said, if, we can always change it if, um, if things change or go wrong. Um, if that's an option, but that's, that's my only concern, just like you said, you know, directors change, boards change, I mean, so does the health department as well, the health directors, health boards. Um, so having somewhere stable, like you mentioned, um, I mean, it's county funding. So at the end of the day, we're, we're responsible for it. And as long as they're good with, you know, they're doing the reporting, they're keeping up with it. And we're not having to answer for it. I mean, that, that was just my concern.
Well, I, I feel a lot more comfortable with the health department.
I would like to hear.
Being accountable.
I would like to hear what they got to say. I mean, I heard you, the one thing out of all this that bothers me, we want to do what so-and-so's doing. Why can't we be leaders? Do what we think's best instead of what somebody else.
We're just looking at a program that's successful already in Wilkes Recovery.
Yeah.
Surrey County, people that have already kind of been doing this for ten years and we're just kind of beginning to do it. We don't want to make mistakes with this money. I mean.
When we went to Surrey, he didn't definitively say, you know, one way or the other, but he did recommend, he did recommend to, to leave it a standalone, cause he said that. He said that when you put it under the health department, you're deciding it's a public health issue. When you put it under the sheriff's department, if we decided to do that. It, you decided it's a criminal justice issue, but it's multifaceted. It's bigger than that. Um, so it kind of narrows it down when you put it in one department or the other, you decided what kind of a problem it is.
I think he also said that one of the areas that where he had problems is a lot of politics. And especially the politics from the sheriff's office to, through the board of commissioners, to the county manager. And then the, the bad side was, is the cooperation stopped. It was, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a smooth. Wasn't a smooth transition of communications of trying different programs. And everybody dug their heels in, in, in the sand, kind of.
I like things decentralized and, you know, putting under the county manager is just another centralization. That someone who is plenty busy already, then we got this whole health board, health department that would be out doing that. And, and if we don't use them, then we're kind of not leveraging that expertise that we have, it seems to be.
But, I mean, you know, I mean. If it fails, I'll be the first one to say to bring it back under you and, and you can, and you can correct the, and you can correct the issues.
Yeah, I would do so. So what did you say Keith? You want to hear from the health board, health board?
Yeah, I want to hear the plan.
You want to hear the plan first before we decide?
That's the way I feel.
Okay.
If, if you think they'll present at the next meeting, we can just move it to dis- discussion at the next meeting again.
Do that because he's going to present.
Think you'll have someone present the next meeting, Chad? Okay, let's do that. You can give a long answer, you might should come up to the mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, you've got ninety-four PhDs, MDs, SPMDs, and little old Ds. So it's a broad group of people that have focus on one issue. It doesn't matter whether it's under public health. I can assure you that there's conversations now going on within the sheriff's department for activities in the jail. There's direct partnering with EMS. Would love to get more involved with the juvenile component. This person, if it's the right person, and that's why we have to get it right. We'll work with everybody because they're a resource finder. You have three hundred churches in this county. There's your transportation network. There's some of your peer support. We don't have to throw money at hiring people. That's, you have, you're, you're putting, you don't even have the har, the horse to put that card in front of yet. You've got to get this one person right. Let's finish our plan. We'll have it by your next meeting. You can determine it, okay? I've got to talk to our board tomorrow night. We're trying to get this out. This is all moving, as I told our board, everything's moving very quickly. So Tammy and I have a touch point every Thursday morning, because there is a lot going on. This is very important stuff. Whatever the pleasure of the board of commissioners is, just keep in mind, you've got an entire county. We have one focus. Addiction is a public health issue. Recovery is a public health issue. Working with the sheriff's office to limit recidivism is also part of that social determinants of life. It all comes back to people. And that's a public health thing. That's the only reason, trust me. As chairman of that board, the board, Director Martin, the rest of the staff. Only feels this strongly because we think we can do the job now and quickly. By leveraging off of what the substance use steering committee has already provided. They provided a lot of good recommendations and have also opened up the concept of additional resources. But we have a strategic plan, we have statutory authority, and we have accountability that's already there. That department runs seven different budgets between federal, state, and local. It's not something that Director Martin's not used to. Obviously, she's here tonight for a reason. She feels that way, I assume as well. So, that's it, sorry.
Okay, that's plenty. That's good. Thank you very much. So what, what we'll do is put it on discussion again next meeting. Then we'll decide that and the job description and everything all at one time. Is that good with our mic?
Chad, if you, if you already have fifty-seven pages and you're not quite complete. The sooner you can get it to us the better, because I don't want to be reading sixty or seventy pages night before the next meeting.
My intent is to be done with the, uh, statistical data to make sure it's the most current in the next two days.
Thank you.
Yeah, you could send us an interim version and then the final one when you're done. I think it's a good idea. Our last item on the discussion agenda is, uh, animal control veterinarian contract. And Amber, you're gonna talk about that.
I can just introduce it. I think you've all, you've all read it probably by this point.
You have.
Um, we, uh, Adam, myself and, and I, um, and Natalie. We've, uh, all met with, um, Dr. Hauser and, and talked to him. And he's very interested in, um, being the next, uh, county veteran, veterinarian. Um, the reason you'll see for the contract date is from December one, uh, through the end of the fiscal year through June is cause he, he didn't feel comfortable going longer than that. Just because of, for our purposes, for our decision. He said that, you know, he wanted to make sure we had the flexibility to, if we found somebody else, that we have an option to go with them instead of him. Cause he's, he said he's looking to retire in several years. Um, so he didn't want to lock us into anything. So if, if we, if it does end up working out and, and we like his services and the shelter, um, is, is doing okay under him. Then we can revisit, renew, renewing that contract for another portion of time when it comes May or, May or June closer to Tom.
Okay.
I was just gonna explain. I know it's a short date range for now, but that's, that's the reasoning behind that.
Okay, and when does it need to be approved tonight or?
Uh, preferably, preferably tonight if possible. Um, I know it's starting December one, twenty twenty-three. So it's not going to start until the first of December, but he, but once he knows that this is the route we're gonna take and we're gonna use him as the county veterinarian. He wants to, uh, visit with a shelter several times and train our employees and, and, uh, go over his program of veterinary care. That outlines exactly the expectations they are to do under his license. So he's gonna use that time to train and to get them familiar with his program of veterinary care.
Alrighty. Okay, the board have questions, comments? No start, uh, comment. Are you going?
Well, so he's gonna visit this shelter what, how, once every ninety days. What it said, four hundred dollars a month.
Uh, yeah, it's four hundred dollars a month. Where did you see that at? I must, I must have skipped over. H, H? Oh, there you go, yeah. As far as looking for a number. Yes, so.
Is there any way we can require him to come more often than that?
Uh, possibly.
Seems like a long time in between visits, especially given the fact that we just got fined.
I do know he, I asked this question specifically. I do know he lives or, or I guess operates, um, at the Alamance-Chatham County line. He said, but he has several different counties under him. So that's the reason for, I think, that time is that he can, he travels to other counties and does his, his, his other business as well. Um, his private business. So that's the reason for that. But I can, I can ask. I do know that he's, uh, we can call him or contact him at, at any time. I mean, if they do have questions. But I think the intent is, uh, once he trains the staff on the program of veterinary care. Then they should have clear instructions for, for what to follow. That's how it's ideally supposed to work. And they're supposed to do exactly, you know, what that program of veterinary care says they can. Um, and if, if it's something that they're not, you know, supposed to do or allowed to do, then they'll, at that point, take it to a different vet or call him and ask his opinion. And, and if, if he grants them that access under that program of veterinary care, then, then they'll take care of it at that point. So I mean, they'll always have contact with him, but, uh, but I can inquire about the ninety days and see if we can make it more regular than that.
If an animal gets sick and he's not where he can come to the shelter, I mean, do they? Are they gonna take it to him in Alamance County?
No, they, they would just utilize one of our local veterinarians for that, one of the surrounding ones. But I mean, the majority of, of what the services are at the shelter, um, are stuff our staff can do under his care, like vaccines, microchips. Um, rabies, um, euthanages if, if needed, or any, or anything else like that. All that our shelter staff can take care of. And that's the majority of what they do is the intake stuff and adoptions.
Go ahead and ask your question, Brian.
Just, just the question I just had was related to the, like if an animal's injured. And needed to go somewhere, kind of what, what?
Yeah.
Sonya said, I mean, what? So they would just take a random vet, the animal hospital to, to take it to or? Cause we don't have any current other contracts, right, with?
Right, right. I mean, if it was in, I mean, an emergency, emergency, they'd take it to that Carolina veterinary specialist, I think that we had discussed a few meetings ago. Um, but if it was just something that they, they couldn't fix otherwise, or they weren't, uh, he wasn't in the area to do, then they would, they would take it to one of the local, local veterinarians offices. I mean, and we, we've utilized, I mean, a lot of, we don't just go to one, so I mean, it's not, you know. But, um, what they would do is they'd just bill us like they would any other citizen. I mean, we, we pay our bills, they just invoice us basically for that. We wouldn't need a nece- necessarily a contract. I mean, it'd be nice if we could have one, but.
I'm just, yeah, looking at something for the availability and then plus, you know, uh, expense wise would be, we would, it would be known to us in advance. Instead of fluctuating on emergency.
Right. Well, I mean, even, I mean, even if it's, I think in the past, even if it's something, that's something that's out of the, the contract with that vet. I mean, it's an additional expenditure, but I mean, we have funds, budgeted for that. Um, so I think that's part of the, that's part of the difficulty. We were, we're struggling to find, I think, like Dr. McLeod had mentioned earlier, there, there is a shortage of vets. And it's been very difficult to find one. Um, so we're very, um, glad that Dr. Hauser is able to do this with us. And unfortunately, I wish we did have one that was nearby so we could take it to that vet for everything, but that's just not the case at this point in time. Hopefully, maybe we can still look around in the meantime. And by the time this contract expires at the end of June, which is not that long. Maybe we can find somebody more locally who would be willing to, to take us on.
Well, he, he's not providing any care for the animals under this contract.
It's just that program of veterinary care that allows us to operate under his license.
So, just, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask, uh, maybe somebody from the King Council, do y'all have a vet in King? You do have one? You have two? Okay, cause I got a notice from Dr. Calvin in Walco today that she's closing her business as of December twenty-third. She will no longer be in operation.
I didn't know.
She couldn't, she was trying to get someone to take over her business and it fell through. So she's shutting the doors and getting out. I know we take our animal to, uh, the vet in Walkertown. I'm just trying to think, make sure that we've got some people that we can, so we got two in King.
I know King, I think, I think we've reached out to King to see if they would help us with services and, and some of them have been generous to do that. But they're, I think they're overwhelmed, they're overwhelmed as it is with, with, um, what they have to see in King. So they're not willing to be at the county vet. As far as taking our, our animals to them, I think we, like I said, we do sometimes, but it depends who has availability and their schedules to work. As soon as, I know sometimes we have used, um, some Rockin, Ham County facilities as well, I think in Madison, cause it's close to the line. So it, like, it just depends who.
It's just like Walkertown where we go to. She is packed. We have to wait months to get our animal there. So I just want to make sure we have one or two, if it wasn't available.
Right.
That we could get two. And if they've got two in King, that, that makes me feel better. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, he, um, this guy's been doing this for a while, but using this model, right?
Oh, yeah, I don't.
Has a good record of success of up in counties.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how many years, but like I said, um, I, the state inspector even had told, told us to, to check in to, to him. That he might be a good resource for us to, to utilize. Um, but like I said, I know he's, he already works with other counties and that's why he, he travels a lot to those other counties, um, across the state, so.
So, and so we've always taken our animals to local vets, I think during the day and who was available. And then if it's in those wee hours, it ends up being the emergency vet, if it's an emergency situation. So that's the one you try to avoid the most, the cost of the cost. But we kind of have to utilize all those guys, I think. Biggest problem, biggest issue is this is with the number of animals we have.
Well, and I, and I can make, I can make sure to clarify, once I see what his program of veterinary care looks like, if that's who we end up going with. But hopefully, that's the goal, is that's what the program of veterinary care should outline as well, is what to do in these different situations. is what to do in these different situations. If the animal's this injured, take it here. If the animal's this injured, do this. You know, I mean, it should have guidelines for our employees to follow.
And what's really critical is be able to contact him when we need to, and I'm sure he's got that covered.
Yeah, yeah, uh, he gave me his, his cell phone when I talked to him, so I have it if needed, um, his personal cell phone since he is traveling a lot too. And I know, like I said, our, our staff has already talked to him as well and he would use this time from, if it was approved tonight, from now until December 1, training them and getting them his program of veterinary care. So they could be up to date on that.
Okay. What's the desire of the board tonight? You want to approve this contractor?
I would like to see him come more than once every 90 days. So.
Is that a showstopper for not taking him then if you don't want to do that?
Well.
I don't know who we're gonna get if we don't get him. In our recent history here.
If he's, they're working under his license, you would think he would want to check in more than once a, every 90 days. So that means we're, they're only really gonna see him twice up there for this six-month contract. So he's gonna make, be up there twice?
Probably three times for the training, too, that he'll initially do before December. I mean, I'm sure they'll be in contact with him via phone and email, but, I mean, until he visits, but.
Well, if we don't do him, what's gonna, what's our alternative then?
Situation in Waukano is gonna make the situation even worse.
Worse, exactly.
I, that's where I, I don't even have a clue where to take my kid and I, I mean, she serviced us so long, I'm, I just, why is there a shortage? Is it just sheer volume of animals and dogs and?
I honestly don't know that answer. I don't know. Possibly. I mean, I know, I mean, I know even the one in Pilot Mountain, not that, you know, we've been checking every, everywhere around us. I know even them, they're not taking new clients for anybody, not just, you know, counties or any, even new clients for just regular citizens either. I guess everybody's full. Or retiring one. I guess nobody's going into the field maybe.
You say he would like to know soon so he can do some planning or something?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that's the goal. If he knows tonight, he's not gonna start till, I, I mean, the contract won't officially start till December 1, but he's gonna take that time between now and December 1 to train, to visit our shelter and meet our employees, see what we're doing and train us on his program of veterinary care. Because he has a specific one that he uses and goes by, which is the guidelines and like kind of the expectations for how we're to run the shelter under him, under his license.
Okay, can I get a motion then to do something? I mean, I just don't want to lose the guy.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I can, I can call him.
Well, I think the key thing we got is everybody's probably focused that actually not doing the concern as a couple. Commissioner Cox on the 90 days. Do we wanna try to get around that or go with that? I don't, I don't want to lose it either.
Yeah. Could approve it with the 90 days and then still ask him.
Yeah.
Modify the, could modify the contract later.
Could you always make an amendment, uh, Attorney Browder, if we need, if he would be willing to do that?
He's in agreement.
I mean, I think if you go ahead and agree to that, we can just do that separately. If you go ahead and.
I think that would be the wisest thing, to move it to action and have our attorney, uh, contact him and, uh, ask him if he would be willing to amend the contract to less than 90 days. If not, I'd say we go with it. That's my own opinion. I'm just wondering.
If he wants more money, what happens? He's coming every 60.
Not any, you mean, right now?
Well, I mean, if we ask for 60.
If we move it out.
I would ask for more money personally, but.
In other words, instead of 400, he might ask to apply for them. I mean, I'm just hypothetical, so you're saying, kid?
Yeah, probably worth it, paying more, to come more often, especially given the history. So you're saying this, this starts December 1, but you're saying he'll come and train? Did he say he would do that before his contract starts?
That's what he told me over the phone, unless something's changed since I, well, I spoke to him. But I can confirm that tomorrow when I call him. But we spoke on the phone and, and I did ask him if he could start it, you know, basically tomorrow. And that's what I was gonna make the contract date for and he, he requested that it be December 1 so he'd have time to meet our employees and, and talk to them and give them their program of veterinary care and train.
But they're not supposed to start doing anything until December 1 or they can go ahead and start?
December 1, December 1, yes.
Okay, I, I agree with what Commissioner Menon Hall said. If you put that in a motion, we'd talk to him and if we can modify the contract if we need to later. Or additional costs or reduced studies, whatever. If you change the scope of the contract, then he certainly has a right to ask for more money.
So I'd like to go ahead and move it to action tonight.
Okay, can you make the motion then?
I will.
Okay. Everybody good with action tonight?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I will move it to action then.
Okay.
Action off, okay. And that concludes our discussion agenda, our action agenda. We got a couple items on it, actually four now, I think. Uh, the first one is the offer for surplus tax foreclosed property. I get a motion for approval. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Asked unanimously. Uh, the next item, uh, is PTRC Workforce Development Board Appointment, and that's for Cindy Tuttle. Do we poll on that one?
Yes.
Okay, can we poll on, on that one?
Tuttle.
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 Okay. It also passes unanimously. Uh, let's say other.
New positions for DSS?
Yeah.
And new positions, DSS.
Make a motion to approve the three new positions attached to the Medicaid expansion with DSS.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passing unanimously.
And the financing equipment and then the repaving.
Okay, the financing item and repaving at Autumn Square, motion?
Make a motion to, uh, approve the financing and, um, and the paving at Autumn Square with it be awarded to First National Bank in option one.
Second.
Now, any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the animal control contract.
And the animal control contract.
Make a motion that we, uh, accept a contract between the county and Dr. Ralph Hauser to be our new veterinarian for the animal shelter. And also in that motion, I'd like to, uh, provide our county attorney, uh, Browder, the chance to contact him to see if he could come, uh, more frequently than 90 days, maybe every 60 days, and let our attorney work that out.
Second. Second. Need further discussion? Uh, one thing, uh, I would just add to that, not to the motion, but then whenever you guys talk to him, ask him why he has the 90 days and if he thinks that's adequate or whatever, give an explanation of that. Any further questions? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes four to one with Commissioner Cox voting no. I think that's it, isn't it, Amber?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the only thing we have left now is a closed session, so Amber, would you read the, uh, justification for an enclosed session?
Yes, sir. To consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1183, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations pursuant to GS 143-318.1184, and to consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any office or position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners or any other public body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1186.
Motion, Jr., closed.
Second. Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay, we're.
Turn it back. Okay.
Okay, we're back in open session. Does any board member have any further business or if not, we'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.